Good evening, everyone. It's now seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yeah.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. Um, before we get started, Berima, um, three people would need to be promoted for the public presentation. That's Whitney Gregor, Kami LaFune, and Anna Johnson. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from last meeting on February 7. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Is there any corrections? Or additions? Yes, Grace?
Thanks. I had a quick thing. Sorry, I didn't have a chance to email it on item six at the bottom with abstention. Uh, we could just put the full name, um, board member of the Champagne County Environmental Stewards, if possible.
Are there any additional comments about the meeting minutes? Okay, I have approval by Mary Alice and seconded by Grace with the corrections. Um, will the clerk please call the row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Okay, minutes approved. Um, are there any additions to the agenda? Nope, okay. Um, next we'll have public input and presentations. Um, if you would like to address the committee of the whole, please raise your virtual hand and you will be called upon. Um, first I see Alan Axaroff. You have four minutes to speak.
Good morning or good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So this past week, there was an incidence involving antisemitism of the far-right variety on campus. I remember people talking about the university campus as one of the most instrumented places, and so therefore most equipped to be able to get to the bottom of things. They don't seem to be getting to the bottom of this at the moment and have been asking people for any information that they have. So this goes all the way back to placing human intelligence with automated intelligence. And I'm not really sure if there's a better way to talk about this at the moment because I'm still processing. Don't start. I'll transition to this. Uh, there is now a 54th member organization to no Ameren shut offs. They are the St. Louis DSA. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak? From public input? I'm not seeing any more hands, so we'll move on to presentations. Um, tonight we have one presentation by representatives from Champagne, Urbana Public Health District on restricting use of e-cigarettes in public spaces. I believe we'll hear from Whitney Gregor and Kami LaFune.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um, thank you so much for having us tonight. We have a quick PowerPoint we're going to run through and then we're happy to, um, have some question and answer at the end. So if I can share my screen. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay, so we'll put that in the beginning. Perfect. Okay, so we're here tonight to talk to you about e-cigarette-free public spaces. Um, I, myself, I'm Whitney Gregor. I'm from the Champagne, Urbana Public Health District. I'm the interim um, Director of Wellness and Health Promotion. Um, and with me this evening, I have Kami LaFune. She's one of our health educators. And then Anna Johnson is also a health educator with us. Um, our team is responsible for the Illinois Tobacco-Free Communities Grant through the Illinois Department of Public Health. Um, and through that grant, we are the enforcer of the Smoke Free Illinois Act in all of Champagne County. Um, we are also the Chair of the Champagne County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, um, which is just a group of like-minded organizations that focuses on tobacco prevention in our area. Um, Kami is actually going to get us started tonight. Um, so Kami, are you?
Yes.
Awesome.
Can you all hear me? Okay. Um, like Whitney mentioned, we're here to discuss the benefits of an ordinance that prohibits the use of e-cigarettes in public spaces. Um, our division is working on a lot of different aspects, targeting tobacco and nicotine use in Champagne County, um, with different forms of education and policy. And what we're here to discuss is more of the policy aspect. So just a general overview of e-cigarettes, if you're not already aware. Um, e-cigarettes have become increasingly popular in the last five or so years. There's hundreds of brands and types that people can purchase. Um, and essentially there is some sort of heating element to heat up a e-cigarette juice, vape juice or pod. And those juices are containing some concentration of nicotine for the user to inhale. Other devices can use different substances like CBD or THC. But when these were first introduced on the market, what they were for the use of nicotine inhalation from the user. Go to the next slide, Whitney. It's important to note, um, with these devices, it is not just a water vapor that someone is inhaling and then also exhaling. These aerosols contain lots of different ingredients depending on the brand. Primarily is going to contain some concentration of nicotine based on user preference. But then also lots of other harmful ingredients, ultrafine particles that can cause irritations to one's respiratory health or lungs. Um, other low-level toxins that can lead to cancers, heavy metals such as nickel, tin, and lead. In the general sense, we have an understanding of what that means, um, to one's health, but then when it is inhaled from the user, it can cause long-term health concerns. Next slide. As employees of Champagne, Urbana Public Health District, it's necessary for us to discuss e-cigarettes' impact on our public health and the potential dangers to the community at whole. Um, so while there are immediate implications for the user on their own health when using e-cigarette devices, there is also secondhand exposure concerns for bystanders, bystanders around them. Um, the elements found in the e-cigarette aerosol can cause, um, health concerns for people inhaling secondhand. Um, it can cause immediate respiratory, um, issues for someone. It can also exacerbate somebody's asthma or other existing health concerns um, that we should just try and avoid if at all possible. Also, there are some concerns with the pervasive use of vaping in public spaces where this is now normalizing that behavior for youth. Um, youth today have grown up in the era of the Smoke Free Illinois Act where they are not walking into a restaurant and seeing people smoking cigarettes inside like we all were probably exposed to. Um, but now they're seeing vaping quite frequently in public spaces. So now this is not something where it is seen as taboo and it's becoming more normalized for youth um, and seen as accepted where they may then lead to participating themselves, um, which is a great concern for us in wanting to promote the health of youth in our community. Um, vaping in public is also just seen as a nuisance. While e-cigarettes may not produce the harmful odor that other tobacco smoke would, um, it is just an inconvenience to others around the user and the aerosol can cause an irritation to one's airways, um, especially in today's climate when we're incredibly concerned about our respiratory health and hopefully the respiratory health of those around us. We want to limit those irritations and make sure that people can breathe clean air as best as possible. And Whitney, now it's your turn.
Fabulous. Thank you, Kami. So, um, one of the main reasons that we are looking at addressing e-cigarettes on, um, more of a city level, municipality level is because of the fact that e-cigarettes are not currently included in our statewide Smoke Free Illinois Act. Um, and there is no significant progress at that level to have e-cigarettes included into the, um, Smoke Free Illinois Act. It doesn't look like that's going to come anytime soon where we would open up the Smoke Free Illinois Act and add e-cigarettes into them. Um, for those of you that are not aware, the Smoke Free Illinois Act prohibits, um, use of traditional cigarettes um, in public spaces or within 15 feet of doors, windows, and ventilation units. Um, and like Kami just mentioned, the widespread use of e-cigarettes, especially by, um, youth, really presents this urgent need to address it at a city level. Um, so there are a couple of benefits of e-cigarette ordinance. Obviously cleaner air. Um, Kami had mentioned this right now. Um, you know, you're not allowed to smoke inside any public places. Um, the other part of this is uniformity of enforcement. So there are a lot of businesses, um, restaurants, bars, even, you know, regular workplaces um, that do prohibit the use of e-cigarettes on their grounds inside. Um, but there just, there is no uniformity in that. Um, some places allow it, some don't, some allow it in some parts of the building, um, things like that. So, um, a city-level ordinance would address that and have everybody doing the same thing um, across the board. And also, um, it promotes tobacco-free norms for youth. Um, we've all heard about the e-cigarette, the vaping epidemic among youth. Um, this is just another tool in our toolkit to address that. Um, making it seen as not a normalization of this behavior, um, and things like that. Um, so there are a lot of different ways that UPHD can assist. We're definitely not asking you to do something and, you know, I'm going to leave you high and dry. Um, through our Illinois Tobacco, uh, Illinois Tobacco-Free Communities Grant, uh, we have funding and staff power to assist in a lot of different ways. Um, we can help with drafting the ordinance, um, and connecting Urbana to, uh, relevant public health, um, entities that can help with drafting the ordinance, answering those really technical law questions that we might not be as, um, attuned to. Um, we can definitely help out with working with, um, Urbana businesses and training staff, um, providing signage, um, different, uh, sample policies for them to have, you know, it for their specific organization. Uh, we can also assist with enforcement, which, um, we believe might be a little bit of, um, an undertaking for a city council, for a city government to take on, but we are experienced with, um, and the enforcement of the Smoke Free Illinois Act. Um, so we issue those citations, we investigate complaints, um, we write warning letters and we work with business owners, um, to comply with the Smoke Free Illinois Act and we can do that um, for the inclusion of e-cigarettes in a, in a city policy. And then finally, um, we can absolutely help with media campaigns to, you know, let businesses know that this is coming, that this, um, what the expectations are, what the regulations are, help with, you know, setting up town hall meetings or whatever kind of um, meetings that we would like for people to attend if they have questions, um, things like that. So there's a lot of different ways that we can assist. Um, we can be as involved or as not involved as um, the council wishes. So this is Kami and I's, um, contact information. We're available pretty much all the time. Those are emails and our phone numbers. And then we absolutely have to plug our Tobacco Prevention Coalition. Um, if you're interested in joining, we meet, um, every quarter. Um, and we just get together and talk about tobacco prevention efforts in our county as well as Douglas County because they are included in our grant. Um, so we are happy to answer questions tonight or in the future. Um, just let us know. And thank you for having us. And this is our resources page.
Okay, thank you both, Whitney and Kami. If you could stop sharing your screen. Awesome, thank you. Um, are there any questions for our presenters this evening? James?
Yeah, you mentioned that, uh, on the statewide scale, uh, this is not making progress. What, what do you see as the barrier for um, this to be taken up statewide? Like, um, the Smoke Free Illinois process came up?
One of the reasons they are worried about, they're worried about actually opening up the Smoke Free Illinois Act in general, opening that up for any kind of interpretation um, and any kind of update and just adding, opening it up and adding the e-cigarettes allows opportunities to look at other parts of it. Um, and there just hasn't been, I guess enough support or enough, whatever you want to call it, to support opening it up and adding that in. Um, Kami, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, that's the main reason, um, is that.
And then what, what is the current? Um, you mentioned public support. What, what are you looking at as far as public support in Champagne County or the Champagne, Urbana city area?
We don't actually have any current data on public support. Um, a few fiscal years ago, we worked on assisting businesses with implementing e-cigarette policies just within their own organizations. Um, and just kind of anecdotally, a lot of the people we talked to, um, either assumed that e-cigarettes were not allowed to be used in public spaces or they just didn't allow them in general. Um, but we were really trying to assist them with putting something in writing to have some, some teeth behind it if they really had to, um, you know, ask somebody to stop vaping. Um, so we are not, we don't have any current data on that, but that is also something that public health could assist with, some sort of, you know, surveying campaign or public input campaign. Um, that's another thing we can assist with through our, um, Illinois Tobacco-Free Communities Grant.
Chris?
Thank you, Shandra. Um, thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm not opposing you at all here when I say this, but I will just tell you anecdotally. Um, wherever I go, bars, grocery stores, restaurants, Lincoln Square Mall, I never see anyone lighting up an e-cigarette. So, and I never get any complaints about e-cigarettes. So I've, you know, it, it feels like we're fixing something and it ain't broke, but, um, you know, I'll take your word that there's, there's a problem and we need to address it, but frankly, uh, I don't see it ever, you know, day to day, so.
Absolutely, and that's a completely fair point. Um, one of the other reasons that we think that e-cigarette-free policies at a municipality level are important because they just did recently approve an e-cigarette, um, as a cessation device. So there might be more of that coming down, coming down the line of, you know, e-cigarette products that are approved for cessation that might, you know, promote the use of those in public, more public spaces. Um, but yeah, if I, I can see your point of, you know, if we're not seeing it, why do we need to fix it? I, I see that, but I think, we think it's important just as like a public health standpoint to have uniformity, um, in laws and treats e-cigarettes the same way that we treat, um, combustible tobacco products.
Um, Mary Alice?
Um, so you mentioned in the Smoke Free Illinois that deals with tobacco. How does it deal with marijuana?
That was an excellent question. It is, marijuana is also not included in the Smoke Free Illinois Act. Um, I believe, and I am not a hundred percent sure on this, Kami might know, um, that it's included in its own special law um, that you are not allowed to use can't, like combustible cannabis project, products in public. I'm really not sure about that one, but it's not in the Smoke Free Illinois Act.
Thank you.
Grace?
Hi, um, I guess my question is, is there, is there, um, another way of, of going with this in that instead of there being an ordinance that you talk to businesses and see if they voluntarily, uh, make a decision to put up signage and so on and so forth regarding that, this particular thing. You know, if you have, most people don't, don't even think about vaping or smoking or anything like that in a public place like a, um, the mall or, or, um, grocery store or something like that. But, you know, in a bar or, or, or something where, um, smoking isn't allowed, but vaping probably is. Um, have you, you know, gone to any of the businesses first to ask them to voluntarily um, make a policy on their own about e-vap, about e-vaping?
Sure, so we did do that a few years ago through our Illinois Tobacco-Free Communities Grant and it is just, it's really labor-intensive and it's really time-intensive to, um, get those lists, make those calls. Um, it's something that we worked on for, I think, one and a half fiscal years and we have a lot of data. It's just, it's old at this point. Um, a lot is kind of changed, um, especially with COVID. Um, places have opened, places have closed, things like that. So that is, um, one one approach that we have tried before. Um, we saw a lot of, like I said before, people that thought it was included in the first place. Um, a lot of people kind of had that same reaction of why I don't see it, so why do I need it? Kind of thing. Um, and our argument for that is, well, you likely will see it sometime and should have these things in your back pocket, um, to kind of fall back on if you do need to ask somebody to stop vaping in your, in your business.
Okay, another question I have also is, um, uh, uh, I'm not familiar with programs that happen here in, in, um, California. They have what they call Red Ribbon Week. Do you, is that, do they have anything like that here?
I believe Red Ribbon Week is like Drug Free Week. Is that correct?
Right.
Not that I know of. I'm not sure about, we don't do that at public health. Um, local schools might do it. We have some, um, tobacco prevention programming that we offer. Um, and we have, in the past, have reached out to schools to try to assist them with their, their vaping policies, specifically their, um, like their punishments for kids that are caught using e-cigarettes. A lot of times it's very punitive. It's, you know, you're in school suspension, you're getting out of school suspension, you're getting expelled, you know, you're missing class time, things like that. Our approach to that is working with them on more of an educational level as far as like, you know, this is why e-cigarettes are bad. This is why you shouldn't be using them in public. And also if, how, depending on how far they, uh, how far they're into their use, you know, a cessation option, um, for youth. So we have that kind of programming and we also do have youth, uh, vaping prevention programming that we offer.
Okay, because I was just going to suggest that maybe, you know, you, that's something that could be, um, uh, that could begin with, if they, if they don't do that, if, if, if you started with the, with the, um, with the, the kids when they're young.
Yeah.
When I grew up, I actually went to the gas station and bought my dad's cigarettes, but, uh, you know, he, it, that, that's how, that's the difference in how generations are right now. So I'm just saying that, um, maybe if there was an educational program or something like Red, Red Rib, Bleh, Red Ribbon Week during the school year that, that, that's, that opens up an opportunity for, um, for you to reach kids from, you know, kindergarten from K through 12. If, 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 and that would, might be a proposition that you might want to bring up with the school district and, and actually try to, that would be a good opportunity, I think, to educate children regarding tobacco products and so on and so forth.
Absolutely, and, um, we have that programming and then, um, Rosecrance also has their Too Good For Drugs program and they're a lot, in a lot of the local schools. Um, and part of that curriculum is tobacco and other um, e-cigarette and vaping products. Um, so there, that stuff does exist. It's just, especially right now, um, it's really, really hard to get schools to let you come in to do programming. It's just, you know, schools are overwhelmed. It's just one more thing on their plate that they've got to kind of coordinate and figure out, but those programs do exist. I think we're a lot luckier in our community um, than some others that schools allow us to come in and do anything. Um, so we are, we are working on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Diane?
Do you have, I campus have a policy on vaping?
Yes, they do. So I believe it was in 2015 or 16. There's a state law that prohibits the use of, um, e-cigarettes on all institute, public institutes of higher education. So that's another, um, that's another bet, I guess, like a, I don't want to call it a benefit, but obviously a lot of Urbana, a lot of the University of Illinois is housed in Urbana, the city of Urbana. So there's quite a few, um, buildings that are already included in that part of, um, the law as far as public institutions.
Were there any other public institutions included in that law?
All of them. It's all statewide public institutions. So any, you know, any, um, any college, university. I don't know about community colleges. Kami? Oh, it's higher ed. Okay, higher ed. Okay, thank you.
Um, with that, um, we, they have been running into issues with how to enforce if someone were to be vaping. Um, I think there can be a misunderstanding of with the, that policy on campus, it's just for uni, university-owned buildings. However, we understand with campus, there's quite an large array of businesses in Urbana, um, that are still on campus. And so, um, university is only able to enforce within university-owned buildings. However, it's really just, um, they have volunteers who can then try and talk to the person who is vaping. However, we have a more, um, organized enforcement ability where we can receive complaints, um, send warning letters to the business and follow up with any sort of citations. So we can cover a lot more than just the university-owned buildings within the campus area.
Grace?
Thank you. Uh, thank you all for the presentation. I really appreciate the information and the offer to help in all of those really concrete ways and um, just wanted to say that, you know, I'm speaking for myself, would definitely be interested in taking you up on those kinds of offers and supporting a resolution like this. I think it's important for public health. Um, yeah, I definitely do remember the first smoking ban wave. And also for the employees, like I was working in restaurants at that time. And even if it's not very often, you know, if you're an employee and you can't escape it and you're in a mask and COVID and someone's vaping in your face, um, I think there's lots of levels to it. And so I would definitely support that. Um, so I guess just my question on how, I imagine maybe Shandra's connected and spearheading this. Um, but so I guess to throw in a question would be, um, how would we proceed with that kind of partnership?
So in our mind, um, we would really just follow your lead, um, and, you know, listen to whatever kind of, uh, sorry, my cat's trying to get in the frame, uh, whatever kind of assistance that you guys find that you need. We can definitely assist with drafting the actual wording of the ordinance. That's not really our bread and butter. We are not lawyers, law people, um, per se, but we definitely have a lot of connections um, at the state level and then we work with different, um, you know, national level partners that could assist with that as well. Um, we can absolutely hammer out, you know, the enforcement piece and what we want that to look like. Um, and as far as like the filing of complaints, like how do people file a complaint? Um, currently we have that set up for the Smoke Free Illinois Act. We have like a complaint system on our website. So people can go to our website, put in all the details and submit those complaints to us. We could set something like that up, um, for the city of Urbana or the, the complaint system can live on your website or, you know, however you guys want that to run. Um, and definitely I think a big part of this, um, if it were to pass would be the awareness campaign and how we let people know that this is coming and the expectations. Um, and we are inexperienced with media campaigns and rolling those out and, you know, getting media placed and things like that. Um, and the training that would go into it. So setting those timelines as far as like how, when do we want this, this ordinance to enact? How long are we going to have, you know, How long are we going to have, you know, maybe like a grace period, if you will, where if someone does file a citation or a complaint and they're issued a citation, it's more of a kind of a warning and a, you know, a reminder of the ordinance instead of, you know, punitive right away. And we, we think that just the communication of this ordinance is really, really key. The way we do it with the Smoke for Illinois Act and the way we would encourage it to be done, if this were to pass, would be to issue a citation to the business owner and not some, like a member of the public that is vaping inside. So it would be up to the business owner to not allow vaping in their establishment. It would be up to them to kind of monitor that and enforce that. And if complaints were to come into us, we would do an investigation and, you know, issue citations as necessary. So there's a lot of different ways we can help, and we can be as involved or as not involved as you guys would need us to be, but we're happy to help in any way. We have the funding, we have the staffing, we have the support from our leadership team. So we, we have a lot of flexibility.
Thank you.
Daya?
I think you already answered some of my questions, but also want to echo, I really appreciate the presentation. And in terms of that, you know, that question of like, oh, are people doing this? I think so much about when the weather is warmer and there are shows outside, right? Like, I think that's where you see people vaping a lot, and sometimes inside too. So I will say, at least for myself, I've, I've seen folks vaping, and you know, whether it's tobacco or cannabis or whatever, sometimes difficult to say, but I think that's an interesting point as well that sometimes doesn't come up. I think that education component, I think, is really important, and I really appreciate you all raising that, that sometimes there's still this idea of like, you know, the e-cigarettes are not that dangerous, they're not going to have that big an impact on their other people. So like I said, some of my questions have already been answered, but I think if we move forward with this, just wanting to make sure that that education component is a major piece. You know, because I can imagine for businesses, like anytime we're talking about a new expectation or new, you know, regulations being put on them, that that's not a small thing. But also recognizing the importance and the impact on our community, right? The health and well-being, like Grace said, of their employees, of their staff, of their patrons, that that's, that's a priority. So I guess, like I said, not exactly a question, but just to reinforce that I think that education is really important.
Absolutely. And that is our bread and butter in wellness and health promotion. So we not only are happy to help, we're excited about it, because that's, that's our stuff, hello, Jen. That is our, our bread and butter. So we would be more than happy to assist with that.
Diane?
Just a reminder, number one, this isn't a discussion item on the agenda, so we have to keep this two questions related to the presentation. And also, this is a topic that would require some additional staff research, staff work. It would also require outreach to the business community and the other areas that would be impacted by this ordinance. So, so it would take some time to prepare. So it's not just a simple matter of bringing ordinance to council, you know, two weeks from now and passing it. It's going to take some, some background work, but.
Absolutely. Yeah, and we are happy to assist with that in any way that we can.
Right. Are there any more questions for our presenters? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Whitney, Kami, and Anna for being here. I appreciate the information.
Thank you all, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda, are there any staff reports? Carol?
Just want to let folks know that we will be posting the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, for the Community Safety Review on Wednesday, the 23rd. And we will send you the link to that once it's posted, so you can help us get the word out and get as many proposals as possible there. And then also just want to remind folks that tomorrow evening is the final session for the Mayor Council Strategic Goal Setting. It will start at 5:30 PM at Stone Creek Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Just to follow up on Carol's report, again, a reminder that the tomorrow night's meeting is the fifth and final session for the City Council Mayor Goal Setting, and the focus will be on public safety and well-being. The meeting starts at 5:30. Between 5:30 and 6:00 will be public input, and then between 6:00 and 8:00, council members will meet with staff to flesh out the strategies and action steps related to the broad area of public safety and well-being that the council approved. Also, I wanted to let the public know that we received our monthly report from the Crisis Co-Responder Team. It was sent to City Council last week. But between January 6th and February 6th, there were 19 clients opened to the program. Eight were taken to a local emergency room for evaluation and placement in inpatient psychiatric services. Two refused services because they were already linked with psychiatry. Five accepted mental health treatment referrals to various places. One was referred to the living room. Living Room is a new Rosecrans program that's available to individuals that are eight, who are 18 years of age and older. The program runs from Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's a peer-led program with the goal to decrease unnecessary hospitalizations, break the cycle of isolation, develop a peer-based support network. There's a number of services offered, and it's a place for people to go to rest, to get support, to be linked with services. And then three people were unable to be located after the initial CIT report, but in each case, information was left at their homes or with people they were associated with. As far as demographics served, there were 13 females and six males. And by race, it was nine whites, seven blacks, one biracial, one Asian, and one Hispanic. And that was for the month that ended February 6th. Thank you.
Thank you for those reports. Okay, no other staff reports? Okay, Resolution Number 2022-02-020R, A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission Home ARP Allocation Plan, Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022, by Community Development.
Good evening, this is Sheila. I wanted to bring forth this Home ARP Allocation Plan Agreement. If you remember, in the fall, HUD released approximately $150,000 of our Home ARP allocation to be used for this planning process. We set aside about $125,000 of that for consultation services. In December, we issued a request for proposal, kept it open about six weeks due to the holidays, and we did receive two proposals. One was from an agency in Chicago, and the other was from Champagne County Regional Planning Commission. Regional Planning Commission had the lower proposal, as well as, since they are working with us on our regular ARPA funding and are familiar with the home regulations, we would like to award the proposal to them. Once they, they come up with an allocation plan and do public input and community input, then we will bring the, the plan back to council for review prior to submission to HUD. Does anybody have any questions?
Mary Alice, you're muted.
All right, thank you. I had to look up what the fiscal year definition was for the feds, and it's October. So if anybody was curious about that, this would run till October 2022. Is that correct, Sheila?
No, it's, this agreement is on our fiscal year.
It's on our fiscal year, so it'll end on June 30th.
No, there's no end date. The end date will be when the project's complete. The 2122 reference is the fiscal year that we're currently in.
So it'll be budgeted next year, next fiscal year, if we need, they need more time?
Yes. So what will happen is, once this is approved and adopted, then we'll do a purchase order to encumber the funding. So if they don't spend it all by June 30th, it will automatically move over into next year.
Okay. And do you know what plan they have for public engagement?
I do not. We have our first team meeting tomorrow. We wanted to bring it to council first. In case you have any questions, we could bring them up at that team meeting. But, you know, it, it does require an extensive public input process. And I'm kind of hoping some of the input that they've received on the city's ARPA funding will correlate with some of the questions for this plan too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Thanks, Sheila, for the presentation on this. I was trying to understand a little more of the, the amount of this Home ARPA stuff and the importance of that plan and having it distributed. And so my, one of my questions was, this is the up to $50,000 for working with RPC for creating this allocation plan. And is that money, this is coming out of what we already have? The 140, 125,000 sum? Is that right?
Yeah, the, HUD released $148,000 back in the fall. We've signed our funding agreement. It went through the budget process with council. And then of that 148, I think we set aside $25,000 for staffing costs, you know. So my time spent creating this request for proposal and, and having these meetings to help allocate it. And then the balance, we set aside really for consultation services. And so, once we got the proposals back in, we were pleased to see that, that the county had the lowest bid.
Thank you. And some other ones on Section 3, we're just talking about non-discriminatory practices and equal opportunity. And I didn't know if it was possible, although it says local laws, if we could just spell out, you know, so prohibition of discrimination based on criminal background, since that's part of Urbana's human rights ordinance. I think it's kind of implied there, but I think it would be nice if we could have it specifically listed.
Okay, this is typical home program requirements, which is at the federal level. But I will reach out to Dave Westner and see how we can word that so that we meet both the city's and HUD's requirements.
Thank you, just a thought.
Well, and it does say, I mean, before, it shall abide by the human rights ordinances set forth in Chapter 12 of the Urbana Code of Ordinances. So it, it does cover the city's portion.
In Section 4, you say?
Section 3, A4.
A4, okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. And I had another question about the timeline, as I see in Section 6, where it says that the money will be granted by June 30th, 2024. And then Section 7 says the duration of the agreement is until, I was confused here, June 30th, 2023, or five years after project completion? And is that just about the records and confidentiality in a sense?
Yeah, the record retention under Section 4, that is a requirement by the federal government of how long we have to keep the records. So, you know, if, if project's completion is in 2023, you know, add five years there. If it's 2024, it's add five years to that. So we're trying to do this along the same timeline that we do our HUD Annual Action Plan, because we really can't move forward with implementing any of the projects until, you know, council reviews, and then we submit it to HUD. And, you know, between your review process and HUD's review process, that could add, you know, at least three months to the process. And so we want to, you know, try to get the funds out in the community, to use them as best as we can, but yet follow a, a good process so that the public has an opportunity to provide input and that we can look at what the unmet needs are in our community.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you balancing all aspects of that. Thank you for the information.
Is there any more questions for Sheila? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I will move Resolution Number 2022-02-020R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement, the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission Home ARP Allocation Plan for Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022 to the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Charisse. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the, would the clerk please call a row?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is Ordinance Number 2022-02-009, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 6, Omnibus.
Hello, good evening, everyone. All right, so this is the sixth budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022. The first item you see there, under General Fund, we are requesting an additional $25,000 for external services for department head recruitment. And then, under Capital Improvement Fund, there are two items. The first one, we waited to the Traffic Signal Asset Management Plan. It was budgeted at $75,000. And a proposal came in slightly over $90,000. So we will be reprioritizing $20,000 from the sidewalk maintenance program that may not be ready to advertise for bids until the next fiscal year to cover for the full cost. And the next one is related to RACE grant application. So we are reallocating a total of $20,000 from projects with no planned expenditures through the remainder of this fiscal year. So this is to fund for engineering services for the RACE grant application for the Florida Avenue Improvement Project. And next item there, it's under Stormwater Utility Fund. So the city entered into a multi-year contract in fiscal year 2021. So that spans from fiscal year 21 through 23 for stormwater maintenance service. So when the original purchase order was created in fiscal year 21, it was only created for the amount expected to be spent in that fiscal year. And then in fiscal year 22, you know, we budgeted funds for expected costs in fiscal year 22. So we are reallocating $215,913 from storm cleaning and televising project, which hasn't been utilized, so that, so that purchase order can effectively carry through the end of the contract term in fiscal year 23. So under Local Motor Fuel Tax Fund, $9,665 from a couple of projects will be reallocated to cover for the materials and equipment costs related to the turf restoration on the Lincoln Springfield Resurfacing Project. And then a total of $49,000, $49,300 from the Local Motor Fuel Tax Fund will be reallocated to cover the cost for the initial study on Savannah Green Roadway Improvement Project that was budgeted using State Motor Fuel Tax Fund. Now, under Verf Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, we are requesting to carry over the fiscal year 21 and spend funds of $24,124 to cover for the remaining balance on the two new fire engines delivered this fiscal year. That is for Fire Department. And then the last item there, it's related to the Champagne County Environmental Stewards Grant that they will be providing to pay for the construction of the concrete bin for the food scrap composing pilot project. So this amendment is to reflect revenue and expenditures. I think those are it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Public Works Director Tim Cowan is here as well to answer.
Mary Alice?
So I remember when we were talking about the, the Lincoln Springfield Resurfacing Project that that the cost was going to be more than we had anticipated. And I can't remember if that was when we were going through the SIP process or if that's something that we already passed. So it's two questions. The first one is, did we pass something already to, to release those funds for that project? Is, is question one. And question two is, if we're going to now reallocate staff from Public Works to work on that because it's less expensive, what are they not going to be doing now?
Sure. Yes, we have already passed the resolutions to appropriate those funds from the state funds. That's been done. We, we passed an amendment for that when the cost came in higher than expected. So that has been done. And then, the idea behind this was, the prices for the turf restoration were probably in the vicinity of 100,000 more than what we were expecting on a $150,000 or on a $50,000 item. So about 150,000 was what the bid price came in. And I discussed with Kevin Sanderson, our harvest and landscape supervisor, about the breadth of us taking on some of this. I don't know that we're going to see some, any effective drops because some of this happened in the winter season. They did some of the restoration, generally speaking, the topsoil backfilling and stuff through the winter season where they weren't necessarily working on, on critical path items in terms of landscaping. There's probably going to be some drop off come summer when they have to hit this again. But it's, it's probably not something that we're seeing extreme effective loss from because this is probably going to account for less than a week's worth of our, our staff time on this. I wouldn't expect, there, there's not something that we've quantified that we're going to drop off, level of service wise, with this, this being included within our operations now.
Okay, thank you. And then, I, I'm sorry, there's one other question I had about the sidewalk funds. Because I know that sidewalks are always, we have way more sidewalks that we need to work on than we have funds to work on.
Correct.
If, if you could just maybe walk me through a little bit, if we're moving $20,000 away from that to do sidewalk, the, from sidewalks to traffic signal asset management, what does that mean in terms of our sidewalk repairs?
Um, not much, quite frankly, just because I think what we're, we're going to be at is, you know, the question will come is whether those funds roll over or not. The 100,000 that we have allocated for sidewalk maintenance now, typically, historically anyways, it's not something that necessarily has been something that perpetuates and builds year to year. It's kind of more, this is our $100,000 to address sidewalk issues in this year. And if we don't spend it all, it's not necessarily rolling over into the same program the next year. That can be a bigger conversation at some point if we wanted to. But the expectation is that we're probably not going to be able to spend the 100,000 on things yet this year. We're working on a prioritization structure for those sidewalk improvements right now. I, I would speculate we're going to probably be getting that program kind of finalized and starting, working on developing, really like bidding documents for those improvements at the end of this year. But I, I don't expect that we're necessarily going to spend any of that 100,000 in this fiscal year other than things that come up that are immediate concerns where we may have sidewalk failures in front of something that is a major sidewalk use area. You, you know, and, and that's, that's the thing we're building now, is trying to delineate our process. You know, we get calls all the time, and some of them are, we don't like our sidewalk to, you know, we don't have a sidewalk because it's either been grown over or unmaintained completely. And trying to create a process for what are we addressing immediately with our operations crew versus what are we putting into this annual maintenance program that we bid out a number of these spot repairs to get essentially a cognitive scale benefit?
Thank you.
Sharice?
Hi, um, I guess my question is regarding the Stormwater Utility Fund thing. Now, is this rollover that's from last year?
Um, yes and, yes and no. So,
Okay.
Right when I got here, the, the process has been, historically, is we put out essentially a miscellaneous repairs contract that allows us to engage a local contractor to act as an extension of staff to perform sanitary storm repairs, pavement repairs, things that are kind of outside of our expertise in our operations division or they're, they're just of a scale that we don't keep equipment for to complete. And what we do is, the contract, we may be revising how we do it, but for the time being, we have not. The idea is, we have come up with a budget within the bid that says, here's an estimated number of labor hours that are going to be tied to this and equipment and things like that. And we get kind of a rate sheet from these contractors based on the quantities we identify. And talking to finance, what we should have done in FY21, we should have budgeted all of that money in FY21 so that we encumbered it. And then that rolled through FY21, FY22, and FY23. When we created the purchase order, this was probably my fault. I was new and trying to figure it out. I created the purchase order for what I thought we were spending in that year rather than what we would spend through the duration of the contract, which is probably more consistent with what we should be doing. So probably like on capital improvement plans like that, moving forward, you're going to see a big chunk of money in a single fiscal year that rolls through the next two or three fiscal years. Right now, the way it shows, it kind of shows them divvied up in each year. But from a financial standpoint, once we sign a contract, we should really encumber all of those funds at that time.
So you're saying that when you, when you sign a contract with a particular maintenance company, that that contract would be for the entire duration of how, how long the funds last, or?
Well, how long the term is. So like, this one, the term was, I think, say, January 1st of '21 through January 1st of '23. Ideally, for us to sign that contract, we should already, we should have authorization from you, the council, to do so, which we did, but the capital improvement plan probably just needs to be modified in future years that shows that lump of money in a single year rather than split through three years. It, it's, it's going to operationally be spent over three years. But when we sign the contract, is the year that we should encumber that money in the future? And this was an oversight and me being new and trying to create the purchase order as I thought I was supposed to.
Okay, so that's why it looks like rollover, but it's actually not rollover?
Correct, yeah. It, it looks like rollover in the CIP, but, you know, in future years, we'll create one big lump and that will just carry us through the duration of those, that two-year term or whatever we signed the contract for.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Grace?
Yeah, thanks for the rundown of the finances and thanks for taking our questions. I had similar ones as Sharice about the stormwater maintenance. And then if I could just like clarify here, too. So this is the same amount of money and the same project, it's just changing it over accounts. Is that correct?
That's correct. We, we essentially signed the contract for, it, it's an arbitrary amount. So we picked a number and the bid came in, let's say, at 900,000. In theoretically, in year one, we said, well, we're going to spend 200,000 in year one and 400,000 in year two, and then another 300,000 in year three. Realistically, that all should have been encumbered in that first year and just rolled through the other years at, once it goes to a purchase order. The, the, the idea is, with, with these miscellaneous repairs contracts, is they're kind of undefined. You know, we need a, a reasonable amount of money to complete these spot repairs that are outside of our expertise or too big of scale for our operations staff. It could be at the end of this term, we don't spend all that money. Or it could be somewhere, as we approach this, we come back to talk to you, the council members, and say, hey, we're going to exceed that 900,000 that we had appropriated and contracted for, and we need more, and we need to then talk to you guys about amending that. This is not, this is not necessarily what I would call new money. It's, it's money that's available that we appropriated differently because we should have appropriated all in that one year and it got split over three years instead of one. It, it's, it's in our CIP, it's just appropriated incorrectly.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was about the RACE grant application, engineering services. And it sounds like, so it says reallocating funds from projects that we don't plan to work on at the end of the year. And then this is, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's seen as like the upfront cost for hopefully being able to recoup those funds plus more with grants and then be able to fund those projects that funds were taken from? Is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily. The idea here is, the RACE grant applicant, the great, the RACE grant funds are a new source of funding that we're not expected for this, these improvements. And due to the scale of the project and the potential for us, you know, having upwards, upwards of, you know, $10 million in grant funding, we have to put some money upfront to pay for a couple of things to really prepare the application. There are things that we would pay for anyways eventually. So like the environmental assessment and the preliminary intersection design analysis are the two things that we're paying for in this. Which, for the, for the RACE grant application, those are things that we need to have started before we apply for this so that we can kind of incorporate a timeline. It, it improves our application, I'll say, to get these things done ahead of time. The things that we took from, we took $20,000 from sidewalks and bike paths. We don't have an identified need for that yet. But we, we do have like the sidewalk maintenance money available. We have talked about incorporating a, any things from the bike and path plan within the state funds that we've appropriated for other transportation projects this year. So there's still, there's still eligible things there. We just don't have identified needs for those right now. It's not that they're not out there, it's just they haven't been identified and it's unlikely that we're going to extend those funds before the end of this year. And again, that 20,000 from the bikes and side passes, it's not a rollover fund. It's kind of like, this is available for us if and when needs arise. So that is that. The other one, the other 20,000 for, for those is coming from landfill improvements. We are not quite under a contract with a consultant yet to kind of have for looking at, we've got a couple of Lich A list, list stations out in that area that we want to look at. And I think, so we'll go from 50 down to 30, but the 50 was, you know, an undefined number. It was, it was a ballpark number that I came up with, that I said, we need something to get started. And the idea is, we had 50 in this year to get started, and then 100 in next year to kind of ballpark what I think the scale of engineering and then improvements to those Lich A list stations is. I think the idea would be, if we get engaged with them this year and we, I don't think that we'll even spend the 30,000 that's still left there this year with them. But between now and then, if, if we get something done and then they say, hey, it's actually going to be, you know, X amount of dollars more than what you guys have allocated, we can talk about that as we get into the CIP process for this year to allocate additional funds for that if needed.
Okay, because, and this seems like also part of some of the things we talked about in the goal planning, too, right? Of some of that kind of shovel-ready projects and the back work that it takes to be able to apply for some of these big grants. Is that right?
Abs, absolutely. You know, and this, this is just a result of us not being, you know, further prepared. And we're getting there, it's just a matter of we have to get ahead of that curve. So now, we're being kind of what I would call reactionary to these opportunities rather than being proactive to these opportunities. And in, in that vein, we have to get somebody engaged and get a very expedited timeline to get some of these critical items that are required for the application done in a timely fashion. And it's not that they're not going to be things that we were going to have to pay to do anyways. They're just going to be one, a cost that we encumber ahead of time to have this opportunity at these grant funds.
Well, thank you. I, yeah, appreciate that and getting ahead of the curb, curb on things. I do just, I, yeah, I just also have concerns for the said projects that aren't getting funded. I understand if they weren't going to move anyway. But like, for example, I feel like I've been told a few times that there is no resources to support B-PAC and Vision Zero and more bike path stuff. And so it's just interesting to hear that, well, there's $20,000 that we can easily just take for something else. So I definitely support, you know, having the engineering, you know, report background for some of these bigger grant applications. And also just want to be sure that, you know, it's not at the cost of things that we could otherwise use. So that's all, thank you.
Yeah, and I, just to touch on that, Grace, the, the Florida side path as part of that project is the top priority of the bicycle master plan. So in essence, it is going towards funding those things.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Diane?
Just wanted to add, this project was, this opportunity was brought to us by the Mass Transit District. And we're also working with the Regional Planning Commission. And the Champagne County First Group has added this project as one of their projects that we'll be lobbying for in Washington. So, so this is, as Tim mentioned, is it's an unexpected but huge opportunity to expedite construction on fixing Florida Avenue as well as extending the bicycle pedestrian network in the city. So it's something that we don't want to pass up, and it's just a great opportunity, and I hope we can get it.
Are there any more questions for finance about the budget amendment? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'd like to move for ordinance number 2022-02-009, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 6, Omnibus, be moved to City Council for approval. Of course, I don't think it can be on the consent agenda, can it?
Correct, can, cannot.
Okay. There you go.
Second?
Thank you, Jaya. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. Is there any discussion? James?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Grace, I think you've said in the past that you are on the board of the Champagne County Environmental Stewards. And so I'm curious if you're going to be abstaining on this vote as you've done in the previous votes that had an effect on them.
Grace, you may respond.
Thank you. Good question, James. I was wondering the same thing. I'm fine to abstain if we need to. My thought was like, if we've already approved that, that it's kind of just accepting it into the budget. So I'm happy to have feedback. I guess there's not really a hard and fast rule, is that right?
Well, if you have a conflict of interest, you have a conflict of interest. I think that's the challenge of an omnibus motion like this, that might have a component that makes it difficult for one council member or another to vote on the whole. But if you, if you have a, if you have a declared conflict of interest, you should, one, not vote on it, and you should seriously consider recusing yourself from the discussion or advocating for it. So, in general, and this is not specifically about you, Grace, I think this is a problem with an omnibus bill that has one thing in it that might take out one councilperson's ability to participate in the voting, particularly when so many, it's just a very small part of what this whole change reflects.
Yep, I agree. Yeah, I will plan to abstain for this one, and I don't know more about splitting it and if it can still, I don't know how that works with like a super majority vote for the budget thing.
Yeah, actually, that, that's kind of complicated as well, depending on the requirements, how you count those votes change with an abstention and the super majority. So we, we'll have to look at the rules to make sure of that.
Well, I believe it's six out of eight to pass a budget amendment. And so if Grace needs to abstain, there's still a possibility of it.
Actually, actually, the rules, I think, state that an abstention in that case doesn't count against the super majority, so it would be out of seven. So I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it will endanger its, its passing. But, but that's something to pay attention to.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, would the clerk please call a row?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
I'm staying.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Diane?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item before us is Resolution-
Oh, Jaya. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Chandra. I thought, no, I thought she had forgotten Jaya.
No, that was everyone. Okay, next item before us is Resolution Number 2022-02-021R, A Resolution Improving the Engagement of Lotterback- A resolution improving the engagement of Lotterback and Amen LLP for independent financial auditing services. Fiscal years ending June thirty of twenty-two, June thirty of twenty-three, June thirty of twenty twenty-four, June thirty of twenty twenty-five, and June thirty of twenty twenty-six.
Hi, my name is Shannon Clark and yes, this resolution is requesting approval of the engagement of Lotterback and Amen LLP for independent auditing services for those fiscal years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six with an optional three-year extension. So as background information, which is also included in the council memo, the city council has previously engaged Baker's Hill for the past eight years to provide those independent accounting services. In two thousand fourteen, the previous city council engaged Baker's Hill for five years and this was extended for an additional three years. The extension in twenty eighteen was due to the need for continuity. We had an accounting system implementation, a new one, Munis, in February twenty eighteen and was also due to the high level of satisfaction that we did enjoy with Baker Tilly. However, this extension period ended with the most recent audit for FY twenty twenty-one. Therefore, because of that extension ending, the finance department issued a request for a proposal in December and conducted a competitive selection process. So this included the evaluation of firms by the city's evaluation committee. And additional details of that process and timing, which included reviewing the proposals based on the evaluation criteria are in that memo. Just what auditing services they're providing. These include expressing an opinion on the fair presentation and the financial position of the city of Urbana, the Urbana Free Library, the police pension and the fire pension funds. The city's auditors work for the mayor and the city council. So it's part of their role in providing oversight of the city's finances. So because of this relationship, the audit contract requires approval from city council. So the audit process generally starts in May of each year with audit planning. The auditors spend many weeks during preliminary audit and final field work reviewing documents and financial records. They also conduct independent reviews of like our cash and investment balances. They perform compliance testing and they review many financial transactions and records based on their extensive audit procedures. In November, the audit firm prepares a draft financial reports from the information gathered during field work and staff reviews the report. The auditors issue the final reports by mid-December. Both city staff and the audit firm spend hundreds of hours during this six months on the audit. State law requires that we publish a complete set of audited financial statements within six months of the close of each fiscal year. And these are standard fiscal years, so that's December thirty-first is the six months from June thirtieth. So these audits are also to be performed in accordance with generally accepted and government auditing standards. The annual comprehensive financial report issued as a result of this audit meets those requirements. The auditors present the audit to city council and are required and are required communications to city council normally in January. So you may remember on January tenth, our current auditors Baker Tilly did do that presentation to you just recently, last month. So guidance for GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association regarding best practices and selecting auditor were incorporated into this evaluation process and criteria, including the best practice that price would not be the determining factor in the selection criteria. So other types of evaluation criteria used that were detailed in the RFP include being licensed in Illinois, having no conflict of interest with regard to work within the city of Urbana, independence requirements, past experience with comparable governments, the quality of the firm's personnel qualifications, the ability to perform the services, the proposed approach to the audit, compliance with the city's ordinances on equal opportunity and employment, and adherence to the overall requirements in the RFP. So based on this evaluation criteria, the proposals, the presentations and references that we check, the evaluation committee recommends Lotterback and Amen LLP. So part of that process, the evaluation committee did select three firms out of the five that sent in their proposals based on the evaluation criteria we reviewed. And all three firms were qualified and the staff is high, is satisfied with the high level service provided by our current auditor Baker Tilly, as we said. However, the evaluation committee is recommending this change to Lotterback and Amen since the city has been with Baker Tilly for eight years. And a change would provide a fresh perspective to the city's audit process. Now, a change in auditors will require additional staff time to familiarize the new firm with the city's financial information. However, Lotterback and Amen's lower cost proposal would enable some flexibility with the staff to reserve funds for other professional services. So these funds may be beeded due to the transition and for planned financial products that are expected to be implemented in the near future. So staff expects that there will be additional time spent on this audit during the first couple of years or so and there will be little capacity to absorb additional work. So some outside assistance may be needed in those first few years. In addition, the evaluation committee was comfortable with Lotterback and Amen's approach to the audit and the professional qualifications and experience of their partners, staff and firm, particularly with the vast majority of their practice been focused on working with local governments in Illinois. The final price acceptable to both the city and the audit firm is sixty thousand five twenty for the first year. This include, this includes the auditing services for the city, the library and the fire and police pension funds. Additional cost increases are approximately two percent for the next four years. And just as a comparison, our most recent fiscal year FY twenty-one auditing costs were seventy-four thousand three twenty. So therefore, the evaluation committee recommends that the city council forward the resolution approving the engagement of Lotterback and Amen to provide independent auditing services for fiscal years ending June thirty of twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six with an optional three-year extension at the next council meeting, February twenty-eighth, next Monday. The resolution would authorize the mayor to execute a letter of engagement or other agreement consistent with the terms referenced in the resolution and deliver to the city clerk for attestation, the set agreement and substantially the form and substance of this resolution. So that was a lot. So any questions?
Yeah.
Shannon, thank you so much for this presentation and the supporting document as well. I have just a couple of questions. The first, as you mentioned, it's it's not unusual, it is best practice to, you know, change up your auditor periodically. I was curious, is there, is there a standard within those governmental guidelines or elsewhere of how often that happens? Eight years feels like a long time to me and if we're starting with five with a potential additional three years. Just curious if if there is any kind of standard around that.
Fortunately not, that would make it easier, right? So there is, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association does, does their requirement, or not requirement, but their guidance is a minimum five year. And that's because, you know, it takes time to learn the city, you know, it takes time to learn the financials. So a minimum of five years and also, you know, the audit firm and the staff invest a lot of time in each other those first few years. And so, you know, there are some costs that they're investing at the beginning of the term. And so a five-year contract is the recommendation, although unfortunately there's no standard.
Thank you, that's very helpful. That my other question was, you know, related to that conflict of interest piece, right? There's the information about the work that's already being done with the pension boards and that, you know, the the particular staff would be different. That still feels like a conflict of interest to me to have the same firm auditing the work of their staff. I'm just hoping you could speak to that a little bit more.
So yeah, it's it's very different work. So there's the audit of the police and pension funds. So they're auditing it for the fair presentation of the financial statements. Whereas the actuarial services provided for the police pension funds are trying to determine over time if those values for, you know, the retirees collecting those pensions, if that's going to be adequate, what level of funding that looks like for those funds. So it's different work, it's different staff. And it's very common, Lotterback and Amen has four hundred and fifty pension clients. And for the references that we reviewed, many of them were with Lotterback and Amen for auditing services and pension actuarial services as well. So it's not uncommon.
Thank you, still sees bird, but thank you.
Grace?
Thanks. I was wondering about the extension, because it looks like, am I reading it right in the resolution? That this is kind of like pre-authorizing the extension for the mayor to execute, is that right?
That's right. However, just like we did with the last contract, you know, we would weigh the situation. So, you know, do we have a new system? Are we happy with the services that they previously provided? So it would be definitely something that we would be reviewing in light of the circumstances. You know, I don't know what it's going to look like in five years.
But is that, is that common? Because it just seems like, how could we kind of like give up that decision five years from now, right now, in a sense? And like you said, that this firm would work closely with, you know, reporting at least to council and the mayor. And it seems like kind of just giving like a blind consent right now for five years in the future? I didn't know if that was common or it would be typical to, you know, reapprove that extension.
So I would just say it seems like the eight-year term seemed to be, you know, a good timeframe for Baker Tilly. But I guess we could, we could entertain something different if you wanted to make a different recommendation.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable, I think, five years. It makes sense, that seems like it's kind of what we've done in the past, somewhat standard. It does seem like kind of a long commitment. I I don't feel as comfortable, or really comfortable at all with approving the extension before we've even tried their services. And it seems like that's kind of the way it's written here already, is that we're kind of already authorizing the extension. And I feel like it would make sense to just, you know, have an approval and an official approval about extending it when that time comes.
Elizabeth, I guess, were you responding to?
So if it, I think, you know, if the majority of the council prefers that approach, then we could re-redraft the resolution before next week and put it in the packet for this week to, you know, just change the wording to make it happen that way. I'm I'm not clear whether the majority of the council wants wants to do it that way or they'd rather just authorize the full up to eight years at this time.
Dave?
Thanks, I I just wanted to raise a question and, you know, not this can be done now or I guess between Elizabeth and the mayor, the administrator on this. My question is, is how did the RFP go out? Because if the RFP went out for five-year minimum, eight-year total, which resulted in a bids that were received as a program modified this to say, we're only going to do a five-year agreement, does that change what the RFP was really for? And potentially then change the idea of the bids that came into the point where you would end up having to just negate the bids and redo the RFP. I'm just only offering that as food for thought. If that's not necessarily something that has to be done, that's good. But I would just offer the suggestion, Councilwoman Wilken, these are common in terms of the idea of allowing long-term agreements to have extension periods in them that are built into them. And the way I think about this thing is you're agreeing to an eight-year period of time with Lotterback and Amen with a minimum five guaranteed to them and only possibly the extensions of the other periods.
Yes, the way it was written was the five years from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six with an optional three years.
James?
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I was going to speak to something else, but I I think that is kind of ridiculous to have it writ, to assume that because it was written five years with an optional three year that it, that we're committed to eight years. That's just, that's not, that it wouldn't have been written with an optional extension if it was meant to be an eight-year agreement. I I'm I'm going to agree with Grace on on this. So we've had several conversations about committing to the, to things beyond the term of a council or a mayor. And so committing to a, the extension five years from now is beyond any of us necessarily being on this body. And and so I would prefer to see it, see that extension reviewed based on performance. And if they're doing great, great. But I don't, I don't, I don't want to pre-commit to that. If it was written as a five-year commitment with an option to extend, the option to extend should occur at the, at or around four years into the, into the agreement based on performance.
Chris?
Yeah, I just want to agree with James and Grace here. I think that the commitment should be for five and then when we're at the five, whoever's on council can then decide to extend it another three years.
Charisse, you had a, had your hand up? You're on mute.
Just, I guess I'm just kind of a little bit confused in the, it. My impression, at least, is that the reason why there is a, something that goes beyond the term is so that the the next administration that might come in would not have to hurry up and try to to get that kind of thing done. They would actually, this would allow them time to get their own, you know, their own person that they're going to have to audit, their own company or whatever. Or have the the option to extend. If they, if they are pleased with the services that have gone, is to keep some kind of continuity on an office level or at least on an administrative level. That's been my impression of why that is done that way. So I'm not opposed to what we have in place right now based on the simple fact that people have a learning curve. I'm aware of that, that has to be done and, no, there is no, there's nothing saying that, you know, who's going to be on council, but at the very least, it may at least service some kind, some kind of continuity of service regarding these particular administrative trials that a a different administration may have to go through. And then that way, the new council the next year can just, can make that determination as well.
Mary Ellis, would you mind, I'd like to ask a question, would you take?
Sure, I'll take the chair, the chair recognizes Shandra.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Shannon. Before Baker Tilly, who was, who was the auditors and how long did we have them?
Good question, I am not sure. Wiseth might know, she's jumping back on.
Okay. Well, when she comes back, if she has knowledge of that, she can, I'll re-ask the question. Because I'm just wondering, is it the the three-year optional a common thing that we've, you know, sort of been doing this whole time or was the Baker Tilly, you know, the first three-year option and that just rode in? And at what point with Baker Tilly did, did the, the optional three-year extension be confirmed or or passed or?
So Baker Tilly was engaged in twenty fourteen, then in twenty eighteen, it was the optional three years. And again, it was kind of the things that I think it was Charisse was talking about. You know, it gave us time to get familiar with Munis, our new financial system. So it it made sense at the time. And there were the actual recommendation at that time, if you look back at that resolution, was either one year or three years. And the previous council, again, we were happy with Baker Tilly, so they went for three years. They could have said one year, but but they extended it for three years based on the recommendation.
And there wouldn't be any new software components coming in with the new auditors? You would still continue using the Munis?
Yes, we're happy with Munis, but there's always new modules. And for example, we're going through a Munis upgrade this summer. So, you know, things like that, depending on what's happening in twenty twenty-six, you know, that would give us some options to consider at the time. You know, of course, it would be a decision, it would not be a slam dunk, it'd be a review of what is happening at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, I relinquish the chair back to Shandra.
Thank you, Mary Ellis. Jaya?
Um, so looking back at that Baker Tilly example, it does look like council voted on that extension. So I think there's a precedent that's already been set. Um, I think, you know, that is a prime example of where an extension very well may be warranted. But I would echo that, you know, this is, this is new auditing firm. It makes sense. We've got a kind of standard of what the minimum amount of time is. But to set um, a pre-approval for additional time without knowing the quality of the work for a future council, um, I, I, I think, like I said, there's a precedent to suggest that a different method is, is better. Um, at least has been what we've done in the past. And, you know, five years is a lot of time. That gives, you know, whoever is on council, whoever is the mayor, time to have a, a sense for what this auditor is like by that point. Um, I think that, you know, having that option makes perfect sense, but predetermining that it just automatically happens doesn't feel appropriate to me.
James?
Yeah, and to, to, to speak to that, to reinforce what Jaya just said and speak to the question that Sharice brought up. Five years means it'll be two years into the next council and mayor's term. So they, they will have had some time to get comfortable with it. It won't be something they have to figure out day one in, in seeds as maybe some of us feel like we had to do with a couple of things this time around. So I, I don't think that's a concern at all. And, and again, um, I'm gonna support doing the renewal in the future.
I, I just wanna maybe bring a point of order for a moment. So right now, I think if we're moving into the discussion phase, maybe we need a motion to figure out that discussion piece, unless there are other people who have questions.
Grace? Thanks. I, I feel you. I was gonna put down a motion um, for amending the language for this. Cause I think we need to do that first, right, is the emotion for an amendment for um, not pre approving the extension. Um, so I have like hypothetical language, but it doesn't have to be this. But like section one of the resolution um, could say, you know, blah, blah, blah with the city for ending in twenty twenty-six with optional extension for up to three additional years. Cause it sounds like it's not absolutely three or nothing also, right? It could be up to three. Um, and then with council approval, um, some language like that, just not pre approving it, but saying optional extension up to three years. And with the language that council would be approving that extension um, at a specified time or just before the end of the five-year contract.
So Grace, if I could suggest that you're making the motion with those changes? Cause it's not really an amendment until the motion is made. So you can make a motion with those changes suggested and we can work with it like that.
Yes, thank you. I will, how about, let me go back. Motion to um, send this resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero two dash zero two one R, resolution approving the engagement of Lauterbach and AMN LLP for independent financial auditing services, financial years ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six um, to council with no recommendation on the regular agenda um, with the amendment of that specified language.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by James. Um, further discussion? Sharice?
Yeah, I, my assumption is that when some, when the word option is in something, that that option would have to be voted on anyway. Am I incorrect in thinking that the council, the next council or somebody would not already, uh, they, that the contract would be up and the next council would have the option to approve it for another three years? Am, am I incorrect in thinking that that's already written into the resol- the res- resolution?
Yes, Elizabeth.
Sorry, I got bumped off, but that, that's not how I would read it. And so we'll just, we'll just do some work on the resolution and put a different version in the packet that makes it crystal clear that that is not what's the way it's going to happen.
So how is it now, Elizabeth? The way it's written now, how, am I, I'm, I'm misunderstanding something.
So, so the way it's written now, it, it, the way it reads to me is that it gives the mayor, whoever that is at that time, the authority to execute the option.
Okay.
And, and so we will revise the wording, we'll put a new resolution in the packet that makes it clear that, that, that uh, that won't happen that way.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just, okay.
Is there?
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Shandra.
Is there anyone else who has any further discussion?
Was there a second? Excuse me.
Yes, it was, it was seconded by James.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we, I'm sorry, Sharice?
I'm, I'm sorry. I was just reading where it says, "The mayor of the city of Urbana, Illinois shall be and hereby is authorized to engage services uh as independent auditor, da, 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 and to approve app- applicable." So right now, you're saying um, Elizabeth, that it would, it would only be the mayor that would have that, that doesn't have to come before the council?
Correct. Whoever is the mayor at that point in time could approve the extension.
Okay.
We'll rewrite it so that it's clear that, that whoever the mayor is at that time would not have that prior authorization to do that. And then it will have to come back to council to, to do the extension.
Okay.
Uh, Grace? Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, cause then the motion on the table then is um, different than was written in our packet, that it would be, like you said, with the council approval and not an automatic extension. And I also just wanted to say that I would also appreciate some more information about um, a potential or perceived conflict of interest or how those different branches work. Um, you know, I appreciate what you've told us tonight, that you've looked into it and there's other examples and they have different roles. But I would appreciate some more information, um, if you could just send that out before the next week. I think that would help to better understand the roles of the auditing versus the actuarial stuff and how those play together. And um, just kind of re-verifying that there's no potential or potentially perceived conflicts there.
Hmm, that I do not understand.
Yes, we will take that back.
Yep. Hey, does anyone have anything else? If not, if no further discussion, um, will the clerk call the row on this um, sort of amended resolution?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilking?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Um, and the final resolution before us is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero two dash zero two two R, a resolution adopting financial policies.
So Ally and I are both gonna do parts of this presentation, but first I am going to share my screen. Sorry, this is taking me just a second here. It's hard to do on a small screen. Okay, I think you can all see that. Is that right?
Yes, but it's a little, it's not centered, like the words are cut off on the, the slide.
You got the scroll bar. It's not in presentation mode.
Sorry. Are, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I feel like my um, internet connection is going in and out a little bit here, so I apologize. I don't usually have that problem. But, so we're, we are gonna talk about some proposed changes to the city's financial policy.
You're gonna have to adjust the sizing or change to presentation mode? Either needs to be a little bit smaller or start presenting one of the two.
Uh, it is in presentation mode.
We're, we're seeing, we're not seeing that.
Okay. Uh, hey, Ally, would, could you put this up and share your screen? This is just hard for me to do on this little screen here.
Okay, let me try doing that. Okay, can we all see that?
Okay. Yes.
It's better?
Yep, perfect.
All right, so we are going to talk tonight about the city's financial policies. And Ally, if you would flip to the first slide. So the financial policies provide a framework for budget development and other significant um, financial functions of the city. They provide for a consistent approach and stability in the city's finances. This year, we're proposing two changes. The first is increasing the fund balance requirement in the general fund to twenty-five percent. That's something we've been discussing for, for over a year now. The second is adding details on charges between the general fund and other funds to capture administrative overhead. So I'm gonna speak first about the um, general fund reserve part of this, and then Ally is going to speak about the administrative charges. So for a year or so, we've been budgeting based on this twenty-five percent goal, but our policy has not been updated to match. So this policy change would address that and get that in sync with what in fact we have been doing. So our, our, and we've talked about this more than once now, but our, our general fund reserves are basically the cornerstone of our financial flexibility. They provide options for us for responding to unexpected events, things like pandemics, which isn't one that we had anticipated a few years ago. Um, so the proposed policy again is at least, fund balance should be at least twenty-five percent of recurring expenditures, and that could only be depleted below twenty percent in the event of a catastrophic need. In any case, if it dips below the twenty-five percent level, then it would be my responsibility to recommend a strategy to the city council to replenish that. This is really important because without these reserves, we can't guarantee that we can reliably provide services to our residents if something catastrophic or unexpected happens. We might have to respond by reducing services if an event such as a natural disaster, a major recession, or another pandemic were to occur. Can you go to the next slide, Ally? So one of the ways we look at this, yeah, right there. One of the ways we look at this is, is through a risk analysis process and um, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is our national professional organization, provides some guidelines for that. So we, we followed those guy- guidelines and we've done that analysis several times over, over the last five years, certainly. So some of the primary risks that we identified for the city of Urbana were reliance on sales tax revenue, which can be highly variable, reliance on state shared income tax, which can also be variable depending on the state's budget situation, the possibility of infrastructure failures, which could result in a need to tap into general fund resources, and just the general dependency of other funds on the general fund. For example, the retained risk fund um, which provides for liability and workers' comp claims is largely dependent on the general fund for resources. We also provided, there were some secondary risk factors there. I won't go into those. But we also provided a table in the memo that compares the recommended fund balance to requirements at other Illinois cities of similar size. And you can see that there's, there's a pretty broad range. The lowest of those was Quincy with the recommended general fund balance of ten percent. The highest was Crystal Lake. And I believe their recommended fund balance was forty or fifty percent. Yes, it was fifty percent. Um, so that variance reflects in part each city's unique risks and financial situation, but also their ability to um, to, to budget reserves at, at the level that they would like. So again, our recommendation is we want to maintain a minimum fund balance in the general fund of at least twenty-five percent of recurring expenditures. That would be depleted below twenty percent only in the event of a catastrophic need. And if we dip below that goal, then it would be my responsibility to come back to you and discuss the strategy for replenishing that. So with that, I'm gonna give it to Ally so she can talk a little bit about the administrative charges that come from the general fund.
All right, so a little background. Um, so the city provides support services to various activities or programs through a variety of administrative um, support departments. So for example, um, this includes legal services, recruiting and other HR services, and financial services. And as a, as a result, some expenditures that benefit other activities are not being directly allocated to those services, but are accounted for in the administrative um, support departments and the general operating fund. So our current practice is that the uh, general operating fund receives transfers from other funds each year as part of the budget process to reimburse for the costs incurred related to the services provided by the general operating fund. And the transfer amounts are increased each year in accordance with wage increases. And this process has not been reviewed for many years. So um, the general fund is the primary source of city's basic services. And since there are um, a lot of demands on the general fund from programs citywide, it is important to develop and implement an appropriate me- method to recapture some costs of administrative support services that benefit other operating funds or activities outside the general fund. And our current practice does not provide um, a clear, consistent method in identifying the indirect or overhead costs incurred in the general operating fund that benefits other activities outside the general fund. So based on our analysis, we established this methodology in which cost allocations for activities outside um, the general operating fund will be charged to the following activities. So activities that are primarily supported by user fees, for example, sanitary and storm sewer maintenance. And for internal services, when less than seventy-five percent of support comes from the general operating fund. So those funds will not be charged. Um, for example, um, the equipment services and information technology funds. And additionally, to maximize the use of grant funds available to the city, funds that receive most or all of their revenue from gr- grants will not be charged. funds that receive most or all of their revenue from grants will not be charged. So, a step-down allocation method will be implemented. So, now, the first step recognizes the cost support between administrative support programs to ensure that costs incurred related to the services between administrative support programs are fully allocated before final allocations to other activities are made, in which the amount can be calculated by various allocation bases depending on the type of service. And the second step is the final allocation where it allocates administrative support programs, budgeted expenditures, plus the incoming allocated cost from this first step to the other activities outside the general fund. And so, to illustrate, here is a simplified illustration here. So, this is simplified to, to administrative support programs. So, you can see here the first step, financial services supports HR by processing and providing payroll, paying invoices, et cetera. So, we are allocating some of that cost related to those services to HR. And then HR, however, also supports financial services by supporting hiring and benefits administration. So, we will also allocate some of the costs related to those services to financial services. And so, the second step here, we allocate administrative support program budgeted expenditures plus that first step calculation to other activities outside the general fund. So, you can see here that ninety thousand dollars, for example, financial services. The ninety thousand dollars is their budgeted cost, and then the ten thousand, which is allocated from the human resources. And so, that hundred thousand dollar is the total cost that will be allocated to other activities outside the general fund. And so, those activities outside the general fund gets a proportionate share of each admin support programs. And other costs that can be directly allocated to specific activity will also be included in the transfer. So, for example, general operating funds who remain, activities will be fully allocated to the sanitary sewer and storm water programs. And then the parking fund has historically made a payment in lieu of taxes to the general fund for revenue generating properties that are tax exempt. So, this will be reassessed based on changes in tax rates and growth and equalized assessed value since it was last reassessed. So, our recommendation is to, about this methodology, this will provide a clear and consistent method in allocating costs to other activities and will allow general operating fund to recapture some costs of administrative support and offers the closest estimate of the services provided to other activities. And that is the end of our presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mary Alice?
So, I, I'm, I'm trying to understand the administrative costs. I just wanna clarify that we're only pushing administrative costs down to, can I call them cost recovery accounts? Or alternatively, are we pushing administrative costs to all of the individual other units within the city? So, for example, would we be charging community development for HR processing? Or are we only charging the ones that we gather money to provide those services?
So, I would say generally, we're only charging ones that are services that are fee-based. Otherwise, to be honest, it creates a lot of work without really any significant benefit to the general fund. And, and that's also the same reason we excluded some of those internal services fund where the vast majority of their revenue comes from general fund transfers. Because again, it creates a lot of work without any significant benefit to the general fund.
So, this is not the same way that we started changing how IT services are charged to all the departments? This is a different strategy?
This is different, I, IT is set up currently as an internal service fund.
Right.
So, everything they do gets charged out to other funds and.
Right, right, so this is, this is completely separate from that?
Correct.
Okay.
Grace?
Thank you. Yeah, you, Elizabeth, you said the fund can only be depleted below twenty percent in the event of catastrophic need. So, my question is, the definition of catastrophic need? Could massive unemployment be considered catastrophic? Shortage of affordable housing be considered catastrophic? Gun violence be considered catastrophic? Or a grocery store in Ward three, is that, that could be considered catastrophic need?
So, I'm gonna, so we haven't defined that in the policy, but I'm gonna say this. A catastrophic need would require us to amend the budget to draw down the fund balance to that level. So, really, that's a judgment that has to be made by the entire city council.
Grace?
Thank you, so I was trying to figure out the funds transfer. Is it a correct boiled down sense to say that we're cutting the general fund out of being the middleman for services and kind of instead just charging each department directly for the services rendered? Is that accurate or no?
Well, I think that kind of relates to the question that council member Wu asked. So, so, no, we're not allocating administrative costs for everything that the city does. We're allocating administrative costs where there's some level of benefit to the general fund and recovering those costs. So, if we create just a circular thing where we're charging the general fund for services from the general fund, that kind of doesn't make sense.
This would be, so like you're saying, that there's administrative services for like other departments that come out of the general fund, right? And you're saying for the larger ones that are mostly based out of that other department, the allocated budget and the expenditures will just go to that apartment instead of going like routed through the general fund? Or is that still not it?
No, so, I'm, I'm gonna try and give you an example here. So, as a, as a practical matter, like almost everything we do in HR and finance is administrative support, right? We don't have a reason to exist other than the things that we do for the other departments that deliver direct services. But in order to manage that, we have that kind of centralized into a few budget programs in the general fund. But we recognize that we're, we're doing work that, you know, supports activities that are happening in other funds. And so, we wanna, wanna recover that piece of the pie that can reasonably be attributed to those other programs and services outside the general fund.
So, my question was, what would be the financial or practical impacts to the other funds then?
So, so there has, these, these charges have been set up long before my time at the city. So, I've been here since 2014. So, there have been charges occurring between the funds in this way. What we're really doing at this point is, we're, we're, we've reviewed the methodology. So, we've come up with what we think is a very rationality for doing this, and we're memorializing it in the financial policies. It's not, it's not something that's entirely new, it just hasn't been in the policies, and the methodology really hasn't been clear.
Thanks, I'll try and wrap my head around that still. I didn't know if you could try and explain a little more about the, the parking fund is one. I don't quite understand about this payment in lieu of taxes and how that works.
So, that payment in lieu of taxes has been happening for, I can't remember. I look back into old budgets, I thought, I think I got back into the early two thousands and even earlier probably. And that has been occurring for years and years and years. And, and so, none of us were here at the time that happened, but I believe the logic was those parking lots are revenue generating properties for the parking fund. They run out the parking, but because they're city-owned properties, there's no, there is no property tax revenue. So, I, you know, if I think about this, the logic had to be that since they're revenue generating properties, they should replace the lost property tax revenue that the city would otherwise receive. So, if a, if a private business owned one of those lots and put rental parking or, you know, hourly parking on it, they would be paying taxes to the city.
So, kind of the city paying itself in lieu of the taxes it's missing?
Right, that, well, yes, the city paying itself, but, but between different funds because parking is in a separate fund. But the, the revenue that's lost, if you, if you think through how the tax levy process works, the revenue that's lost is ultimately lost in the general fund.
Thank you.
James?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, on this table of cities and populations and general fund expenditures, what percent, if Champagne was on this list, what percentage do they have of recurring expenses in their minimum fund balance policy?
Their, their current policy is ten percent, I believe. But we have to remember that it, it's a difficult comparison to make, right? Their general fund budget is more than twice as large as ours, and their sources of revenue are, are a little bit different. So, I think with a, with a larger budget overall, with a larger general fund budget, it's easier to have a lower fund balance because it's a much larger number.
Are they also considered lower risk than we are because of that?
So, I haven't, I, at some time in.
We lost her again.
The past, I probably did that evaluation for them, but I say lower, just to, for example, in one respect, they might be higher risk because they're more, they're, they're very dependent on, I feel like my interconnect connection is getting funny. They're, they're very dependent on sales tax revenue, just as we are. But the sales tax revenue that we receive is more from what I consider more essential businesses. Our, our sales tax revenue comes, you know, from Walmart, Meyer grocery stores, whereas theirs comes from a lot of retail that is more, well, we're probably more discretionary. And I think we saw that early in the pandemic when their sales tax revenues declined a little more sharply than ours did.
Okay, and, and to, sorry, just to kind of reiterate Grace's question. So, the, the revenue we receive from parking in those parking lots is renting spaces to the public or to another entity? Is that where that revenue is coming from?
Sure, correct, some of it's coming through meters, right? Some of our parking lots have meters in them and they're hourly, but some of it is coming from rental parking, yes, like monthly.
Either to the county or to, okay, and, and so, so if it, if it was a parking lot owned by a private company, they'd be paying in property taxes on that. It's not unlike a nonprofit who engages in unrelated activities and gets revenue and has to pay tax on that like a normal company would because it's unrelated to their core value or core mission?
Yeah, you could think about that.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I just wanna confirm, so the library, are, they are not gonna be charged these administrative costs? Because I believe we run their payroll.
No, they are not. But, and I'll, I'll say again, that would be kind of a circular kind of thing because we levy their taxes, and to the extent that we levy taxes for them, that's less revenue in the general fund for us. We do, they actually, just for clarification, they actually do run their own payroll. They run their, they run their own payroll using our financial system. We don't, we don't.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't levying more charges to the library based on this change in policy.
No, we are not.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grace?
Thank you, I feel like I at least understand the reserves and the parking fund transfer. I'm still having a hard time understanding the account allocations. And so, my question was if, you know, maybe even in the next week before a final decision for council, if we could have a few more examples, I appreciate the ones you've given us, but kind of so I can, I'm having a hard time contextualizing, like what kinds of things are we talking about? And what kinds of things are we not talking about? And that would be helpful for me to know, like what, what things we're actually considering here and how that would impact the overall financial aspect and then also those other respective accounts?
Yes, but ju- just to help us, just to help me and Ally understand what you're asking for. Are you looking for like, for example, a list of, a list of all the things that we would consider administrative programs that, that would be allocated? Is, is that what you're looking for?
I think so, I feel like I don't even understand the situation enough to answer that question well. But yeah, I'm having a hard time having, contextualizing what we're talking about, what sorts of services and what sorts of accounts.
Okay, alright, I, I think we can come up with something.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. I am gonna move resolution number twenty-two zero two zero two two R, a resolution adopting financial policies to city council with a recommendation for approval, but not on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, that was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Jaya?
I just wanted to chime in and say thank you again. I think this memo was very clear and, you know, bringing out, breaking out like the percentages that are recommended for a city like ours with a moderate risk. It just, it saved a lot of questions, so I just wanted to say thank you, I think that's really important. And I also just appreciate the, all of the years of work that has gone into the protection and stability of the, you know, of, of our city. Having these kinds of reserves can feel really uncomfortable when we are in a time of crisis. And I know that's something we're all navigating right now, how do we find that balance? But you never wanna be in a position where you don't have those reserves when you need them. So, I just appreciate both how it's laid out here and then all of the years of work that have gotten us to this place. So, thank you all.
Ms. James?
Yeah, and I, I, I wanna reiterate that, Jaya, thanks for saying that. And also, I wanna say thank you for your patience on working through what can be some complex financial concepts and, and bringing it to us in a way that is clear and concise and, and hopefully with a few more examples, it can, we can all be comfortable with what it means. So, I appreciate that.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'd ask for the clerk to call the robe.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Present.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Coisenberry?
Yes.
Great, that motion passes. And the final item on our agenda is council input and communications. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Ms. James?
Yeah, I did wanna mention, one of my constituents shared with me a flyer about tomorrow night's meeting, which I believe gives the impression that tomorrow night's meeting is a meeting of the Urbana City Council to decide what to do about gun violence. And so, while it's true that we'll be working on council goals with regard to public safety, it is not a specific meeting to address the public's concern about gun violence. So, I would ask the public who's watching and council members, if you have constituents that are sharing that information, that you encourage them to understand that this is a working meeting for the council to complete our goals. It may address some of the things that they may want to come during the public input and talk to us about, but it is not a very specific meeting as this flyer implied. And particularly with the passage of Champagne's budget very recently on their plan. And particularly with the passage of Champaign's budget very recently on their plan, I think there's an opportunity for people to come to this meeting and be disappointed like we saw at our first planning meeting when the public came to talk and thought it was a public engagement session to drive what we were working on. I mean, we're always glad to hear the public's opinion and have them share it. But this is the culmination of the council's work on determining our goals for how we're going to work together and what we're going to focus on. It will, the things that we will be doing, it'll have plenty of opportunities for public engagement, just like the ARPA planning that we're going to be doing and deciding where those funds go. But I think that flyer that's being shared around is a little bit unclear on what we're doing and may create some unhappiness with people who arrive. So, just be aware of that.
Grace?
Thank you. I want to say thanks to council and staff for, you know, all the work coming together on these things all the time. And I wanted to talk a little bit, just throw out some thoughts about the RFP, RFQ for the Community Safety Review. I appreciate the work done on that and having council input and then taking another round of feedback. So, I appreciate that. And I did want to broach the subject of how the process would go for finally approving a recommended strategy. Just because from the RFQ, I know it's not really related to that directly. But it just kind of seems like, you know, it says for each recommendation that's adopted and funded. And, you know, I would be assuming that that means with council approval and public input. But I feel like there are reasons to not assume that that would be the case. So, I just wanted to broach that subject on what kind of procedure we're going to have when a recommendation comes back. And if that's going to be meaningful public input and then approval for like a vote from council or how that process is going to work.
Okay. Diane?
Yes, I wanted to announce that the Government Finance Officers Association has once again awarded the city of Urbana the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. I meant to do this during staff report and forgot to do that. But this is an award that recognizes our budget document for the year beginning July of 2021 as a policy document, a financial plan, an operational guide, and a communication device. And this is reviewed, peer-reviewed, and by panel of judges. And these decisions are made by them. So, I want to recognize specifically the work of the finance department and particularly Ally Robinson, who took the lead on our budget. And it was her first, it was her first stab at it. And to maintain the standard of excellence is really terrific. So, I wanted to thank Ally, the entire finance department for their work on the budget. We've come a long way.
Are there any other council members who'd like to have a word? Okay, with no other business before the committee, I will call this meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.